And welcome to the December 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting, public meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television. And also real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows viewers to view the meeting and also to provide questions or comment. Through the board in real time during the public comment portion of each hearing. For Zoom login instructions, instructions and the meeting link for this meeting can be found at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. There is a link there to click and then start up the Zoom virtual app. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chair of the board. We have Ken Foreman, who is the vice chairman. Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski, who is a full voting member and Mary Berry, who is associate number. Norrie Stockman is our zoning administrator. Ashley Demello is our recording secretary. And we also have a few people helping us from Falmouth IT department, Tom Cox, Adriana Pantano and Justin Shanahan. And of course, our friends at FCTV are helping us stream this as well. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town. And we consider requests for special permits, variances and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All the board's decisions are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and to the, from the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments. And summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicants representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. The board recently adopted a modified version of our usual public comment. And what we decided was to allow everyone. If anyone is interested in providing any question, comments or concerns regarding a project using the Zoom virtual software app. You can click raise hand. And we will get to you when the time comes. At that time, I'll acknowledge that someone's hand has been raised and will elevate them. We ask you to please use your name and address for the record. And then you can ask whatever question, comment or concern you may have. Public comment may be. An opinion in favor or an opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. We also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. The board, the chair will limit the discussion in interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. And again, when the time comes for. Public comment during each application, we'll just ask you to raise your hand. We will raise one person at a time. In order to facilitate for public comment and we do ask you to please be patient if you do have a hand raised. We will get to you. And just a reminder for everyone, public comment is meant for questions and comments to be asked through the board itself. It's not meant for a back and forth conversation with the applicant. So we will ask you to ask whatever questions. If you do have multiple questions, we will ask you to. Ask them away and then allow the applicant to respond. After that, the board will either close or continue a hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue. The hearing to a future date and time. After a hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to either deny or approve would be made and voted upon. A motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night. We do have a public comment period. We have two continuations, two new public hearings. And a number of items on our open meeting agenda. So first up for tonight is public comment. This public comment portion is actually meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone has anything to say that is not onto the agenda, go ahead and raise your hand. We can elevate you and you can say whatever you want and. As far as the other public comment goes, we just ask you if you have any comment on other applications, just. Stand by and wait for that application to open and for that public hearing. Okay, not seeing anything for public comment. We'll move on to our continuations. We have application 51 dash 20 Heald's trustees, 19 Chapquid Bars Road in West Falmouth. And I believe the applicant is being represented by attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Hurry, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants Philip and Jennifer Heald. We've been before you on this matter twice so far. And at the last hearing, I thought it was fairly clear where the board stood. So the applicants have. Decided to request a withdrawal without prejudice of the special permit. They have closed the proposed third door garage bay, and I have a photo of that that I'd be happy to share with you if you'd like. Be there with me for one moment here. They have, they have closed over the third garage bay and. Would like to request a withdrawal of their special permit without prejudice.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Clower.
Happy to move that.
Seconding it.
All right, so the motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, that motion was made by Ken and seconded by. Who had that?
Scott.
Scott, okay, seconded by Scott. Real call vote, Ken?
And Foreman, I?
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I?
Bob?
Albert Dugan, I?
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I?
And TJ Hurry, I. So the motion passed unanimously. This application is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you.
Hey, coming up next, we have a, the second continuation for the night. We have application 58 dash 20 Privet trustees, 149 Allen Avenue in Falmouth. And again, for the applicant is Attorney Clower.
Evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Paul and Michelle Prevert, the owners of 149 Allen Avenue. Last week's hearing, there were some requests by the board. To, to correct, make some minor changes to the plant site plan and the building plans, which have been done. As well as submit a proposed deed restriction, which has likewise been done. And I know town council had offered a few small revisions, all of which we were fine with. And everything was submitted to the board this week. I believe those addressed all the questions that were brought up. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that there might be.
Your attorney Clower. And I believe the voting numbers on this project are the full voting, regular voting numbers, rather. Ken, do you have any questions?
I do not. I believe they satisfied our.
Thank you, Ken. Ed?
No, I don't have any problems.
All right, Bob?
The only question I had is, um, why wouldn't they make this being able to be actually accessed from the house itself?
Well, the, the way the house is laid out, there's, there's really, this is the only place that it really makes sense to, to add. So it can be accessed through the garage, but they didn't want to compromise their, their outdoor living space that they use. Quite, quite often. And they thought this, this seemed like the best place to locate it. So it can be, it can be the garage.
But the, the main house doesn't access the garage either, correct?
No, the main house access is, uh. As actually, as I say that. It does appear, no, there, there is no access from the main house. It's just through the garage. The garage, the garage does not access the, uh, the main house because that's what the master bedroom is.
Okay, so I guess my only comment would be that they will be adding living space, but the living space will actually be off of a garage and not actually part of the dwelling itself.
Thank you, Bob. Mary, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, is there? Is the dwelling? Addition? Touching the house?
It's, it's, it'll, it'll be part of the garage, which is attached to the house.
I heard you. I, I understand that. I asked you if. Any part of the part that's habitable space? Is touching the house?
It looks like the garage extends about a foot past the existing wall of the master bedroom. And then the, the additional living area would begin.
Okay. I will have some further comments.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Scott, any questions?
Well, thank you.
All right. We'll turn it to public comment then. If anyone out there has a question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and raise your hand using the Zoom app. And we'll get to you shortly. Right, not seeing anything for public comment at the moment. All right, not seeing anything. Did the board want to discuss this? I think Mary said that you wanted to discuss this project prior to closing. We do have a. Sorry, sorry, Mary. Someone did raise their hand. I just don't know who it is because it's a Galaxy S eight plus. So if we could elevate them and we could see who they are. And whoever this is, you're currently muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself before giving testimony. We do ask you to use your full name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
We can.
This is Heidi Ingram. Did you hear that?
Yep. And what's your address, Heidi?
16 Trotting Lane.
All right. And you have a comment for this application?
Yes, I, um, abut this property that they're proposing, the 40B.
Heidi, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. That is a application that we'll hear later on tonight.
Oh, I've got the wrong one.
Yep.
Okay, I apologize.
Stand by though, you're on the right spot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, bye bye.
Bye. All right. So other than Heidi, I don't think there's any other. Public comment. We can turn it to. Board discussion. And Mary, I think you said that you had a comment.
Well, yeah, I have some board discussion. I don't know if you want it during the public hearing or you want to close it and then. Hear from me. Either way, I don't, I don't mind.
I suppose we, we.
If it's all the same to the board, Mr. Hurry, I, I'd prefer to keep it open. Just that way I can respond to any questions or comments that might come up.
All right. So if you could just give us a moment, we can discuss it. I know that we won't. If the board's okay with that, I think it's just easier and quicker that way. So Mary, do you want to?
Sure. By definition, the current existing home is a single family detached. Structure. And that means that. It's built on a single lot and it doesn't have any shared walls. It's proposing to add a garage and, uh. It's perfectly acceptable and it's perfectly within anybody's right to want to do something like that. You, you have, however. It's been mentioned repeatedly that this is an addition. And by a definition, an addition is something where you go from one part of the house that's existing into another part of the house that's existing. In this case, there is no shared. Walls with, with the current home. There's no egress from that home into this addition. And it's really by definition, a single family, a, a second unit. On a single family detached. Home lot. And so it seems to me that means it constitutes a second unit. It has something that's, that by definition is used as a kitchen, which is called a kitchenette. Which. The definition of a kitchen is really someplace where meals are prepared. And other household things can take place. To me, this is a second unit. And I, I can't see. That this is something that. Fits the definition of, of what we have in the bylaws.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else want to?
Sorry. If I can respond to that real quick, Mr. Hurry.
Go right ahead.
Would you prefer to have additional comments or, and then respond all at once or?
Well, let's see if the board has any other comment and we can have you address any comments or concerns that we might have. Anyone else want to weigh in on the project?
Terry, didn't we, wasn't there a testimony and we had asked, why didn't they apply for an accessory apartment? As part of this. In an earlier hearing. And if someone could refresh my memory, Mr. Cloud, didn't you say you wanted to reserve the right for later on? Is that what you said or?
No, what I, what I said, Mr. Zalinski, was that. The applicants didn't say anything about, about waiving that right. I'm just always wary of waiving rights moving forward. We, we did agree to a deed restriction, which said that this is not a separate apartment and will not be used as a separate apartment. And, and that, that restriction was approved by town council. There is, there's no intent at all to make this a separate apartment. It is just additional living space because, you know, the applicants have grandchildren and grown children that, that make use of the house on a regular basis.
So what is the formal response to Mary's question?
Well, sure, I'd be happy to address that. The, there's no prohibition on a kitchen. What there's a prohibition upon is cooking. The cooking facility is what creates a second dwelling, a second dwelling unit. It is. Building or portion thereof, uh, which includes. Living, sleeping, cooking and eating. And, and typically cooking is, is the, is the, the bellwether. And the, what's always been, been viewed is if you have a stove, that makes it. A second dwelling. And we're not looking for a stove or any other type of cooking unit. It's a, it's a wet bar.
Well, it's.
I, I understand it's a kitchenette, but, but there's, there's no, there's no prohibition upon having. A refrigerator and a, and a sink and. You know, there, what there is a prohibition on is a separate cooking facility. And we're not, we're not proposing that. We've agreed to a deed restriction saying that, that there's no, there'll be no cooking facility. But there's no, no problem with having more than one kitchen in or in a house.
I would respectfully say that if you have two kitchens in a house. You have a multi-family situation. I don't believe that it's allowable to have two kitchens. And this is a totally separate unit. And by all definitions, that's a separate unit.
I, I respectfully disagree because the, the house doesn't stop where the garage starts. The, the garage is part of the house. It is.
Absolutely, that garage is part of the house. But you have a separate. Unit. That isn't attached to the house. You said it was an addition. But it isn't an addition because you don't go from the house into it. So by definition, this is a separate unit on that property.
I'm confused that, that referring to this as an addition is a problem because. We have an existing garage that they intend to take down, rebuild and add some space onto. So it is an addition to the house. The house, the garage is, is attached. It is tied into the existing house as this one will be. And this is tied into the garage. I don't see that as being a separation of them. And again, we have agreed, we have agreed that this will not be a separate dwelling. It's just intended as additional living space for this one single dwelling on the lot.
Well, I would say it creates a second unit. I don't care. I, I don't see it as, and I, there's no intention, I'm sure from the owner's standpoint. To do anything other than what they said they would do. But what you're doing is creating a second unit. On a, on a single family detached site. You've got a single family to, wait a minute, I'm speaking. With all due respect. You have a home. It's a single family detached home. You put on a garage. As I said, there's no problem with putting a garage on. But then you're adding to that. Garage that's not touching the house, another unit. You could say it has a shared. A shared wall. With a garage that's part of the house. And therefore it definitely would, would fit the definition of a multi-family. Shared like a townhouse, like a row house. Like a condo, like an apartment building would have. So. It, to me, it just doesn't fit the definition.
So. If I, if I may, the, the, it is not, it is not a second dwelling unit because it lacks the requirements for a dwelling. Which again, cooking is usually the, the easiest to identify. There is to be no cooking facility in here. And again, they've agreed to a deed restriction stating very clearly that this is a single family house, not to be rented out, not to be used as a separate dwelling. It is a single family house. That's stated in a deed restriction, which this board requested and town council has received and approved. There, this does not become a second dwelling for that very reason that it, it, it does not meet the definition of a dwelling unit. And it is attached to the house because it's attached to the garage, which is part of the house. The house doesn't stop at the garage. The garage isn't considered separate from the house.
So, so Mr. Cloud, so, so this is what my take on it is. And it's just that. The one thing that's always troubled me and, and I would always want the deed restriction anyways, but. On most of the situations when you're adding living space to a dwelling, that living space flows from the dwelling. In this case. The dwelling stops at the garage. There isn't even an access to go from the house into the garage, even if this back unit wasn't there. And then you're doing an addition off the back and over the garage that again, cannot be. Access from the house. So there literally is no flow. They're two separate, completely separate spaces. That's why I didn't understand why they wouldn't, since they're raising the garage anyways. Why they wouldn't have converted it a little differently so that the, the house would flow. Into the additional living space that they have. A lot of the other projects that we see when there's garages and they're putting rooms over them. You have stairways coming from the main house. This, this is the first one that I've seen. That is being added. It wasn't a structure that was already detached. It actually has no flow into the house whatsoever. I know it will not have cooking facilities by definition. But in reality, for use, when you look at plans and you know they're going to have a fridge, a full size kitchen sink and everything else, in all likelihood. It will be used as some kind of a facility, whether they put a microwave in it or something else. I just have a problem that this, again, this doesn't access the main house. There's no shared wall. There must have been a way they could have done this. Even from the back on the patio without losing too much space. Where you go from one side of the property directly into the other one. As far as a second kitchen, I've dealt with homes personally with second kitchens. You can have, have one, but they're very specifically permitted. They have to have open flow into the rest of the structure or they don't allow it. On the ones that I've had to deal with with the building department. But. I would, I would ask, again, you did the deed restriction, which is fine. I think they need to change something on, on just a description, but it's, it's not a big deal. But my issue is even with this, it is a separate dwelling space. There's no. They're adding living space basically in a separate unit. It's, it, it has no attachment whatsoever. And that's why I didn't know if there was another reason besides they just didn't want to lose some backyard space. Or would they be, would they consider, is there a way they can? Do a revision showing a connection from the main house? Into the additional living space.
So if I can share my screen for a moment, I think just looking at the existing floor plan is instructive. So if you see here, we have the existing floor plan and on the far right side of the house, we have the master bedroom and a bedroom. The, the living room and the dining room and the kitchen are all kind of further to the left. So. The. When they, in redoing it, they, you know, without having to compromise the rest of the house, keeping the garage where it is, moving it forward. And putting that, that additional living area to the rear. Allows for, you know, very easy flow from the master bedroom to the backyard area to the living area from the kitchen. And the existing kitchen to the backyard area, to the outdoor area. It's, that, that is really one of their primary users. They, they use that backyard area a lot. And this will allow for, you know, it's a very nice patio back there. This will allow for easy flow there. It's. I, I'm not aware of, of any, any requirement within the bylaw for direct flow. From one area to the other. And again, it's not, they're not creating a second dwelling unit. They're, they're willingly entering into the restriction. They are not putting in a separate cooking facility. The. There, there's no, there's no prohibition against this by any means. The, there, there's no, there's no prohibition against this by any means. And they've complied with what the board indicated they wanted last week. So I'm a little taken aback and I, I, I don't think my clients are even in the audience tonight because I thought, they, they thought this was going to be a relatively straightforward hearing tonight, based on the board's comments last week, saying, we'll submit, there's a revised plan, submit the deed restriction, it'll be quick. And we'll be, we'll be through this. So, you know, to the extent that we're going to start agreeing to any further changes, in fairness to them, they aren't here this evening. But I, I think that this is very much allowable by the board. There's no requirement that a more of in the bylaw that says that for an addition, there needs to be direct flow. I've been thinking as to whether or not they could build a detached structure as long as it wasn't an additional dwelling unit. And I, I don't see why that wouldn't be permissible either. Again, as long as they're entering into restriction. And this is, remains a single family dwelling, which is what it is. It is intended only for that purpose and they've agreed to that.
Thank you, Attorney Clark. Any other comments or follow-up questions from the board?
Did we discuss the fact it couldn't be an accessory apartment because it was too big square footage wise, right?
I think that was the conclusion that we.
Isn't that, because I know there was some discussion.
I think I asked that question.
Why it was too big for that, right?
I think you're correct.
I'd have had an easier time with it if it was that.
But, but that's not what they want. That's not what they're asking for.
I understand. Is there a microwave in there?
No. No, they've agreed to no cooking facilities in there.
I mean, I think, you know, despite what it looks like, we have to take the applicant at their word. They've filed a deed restriction.
I agree.
And technically, I think Kevin's correct. There is not a requirement. You know, it's awkward the way it is set up, but that is unfortunate consequence of the fact that the master bedroom happens to be adjacent to the garage. And I can understand why they wouldn't want to have, you know, people marching through the bedroom from the garage into the rest of the house. So it's kind of a non-ideal situation, but they've added some living space. But I don't think it rises to the level, quite to the level of two dwellings with the restrictions and as it's described.
And I agree, I agree with Ken. And if it wasn't for the applicant agreeing to a deed restriction, I'd, I'd take a more closer and more serious look at this. I'm not proposing to do it right now, but if it wasn't for the deed restriction, I'd take a look at the privacy factor. I, I'd be taking a real close look at that kitchen, maybe making the sink smaller. That full, I, I wouldn't want to have a full bath or anything like that involved. I know there's a full bath involved on the second floor and a half bath on the first. So I'd, I'd be looking for some sort of negotiation there. But as the project stands now, especially because of the deed restriction, I'd be in favor of it.
I concur.
All right. Anything else on this project? All right, seeing none. Does anyone want to make a motion then?
I'll move to close.
I'll second Mr. Foreman's motion to close.
Motion to close made by Ken and seconded by Scott. Roll call votes, Ken.
And Foreman, aye.
Ed.
Ed, Dan, here and aye.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott.
Doc Slinski, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Ken with the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Findings?
Finding that they have agreed to no cooking facilities in the addition to the garage and have filed a deed restriction to that effect, thereby making this not fit the, fit the legal definition of a second unit or dwelling.
But it won't, it can't be rented.
Well, we're in findings, but we'll get to that. That's condition.
Yep. The applicant applied, sorry, the applicant applied under 243C. And then 24216 would apply.
Yeah.
Then put that one of the bedrooms is, is being converted to an office and that credit is going to the addition.
That's right. That's a good point.
Right.
One of the existing bedrooms in the main house.
Nonconformity to the side yard setback, 6.5 feet were 10s required. The recent rebuild of the garage.
No change to setbacks, no new nonconformities. Relocated dry well, AC unit and rain station are added to the plan.
Anything else for findings?
Just that all.
Yeah, you actually want to put in, give me one second, there's a couple on. You want to add in from engineering, the soil and erosion control standards?
So the, the usual conditions from them, erosion control.
Yeah, you actually want to put in findings that they did go in front of conservation. Second. They did go in front of conservation for a determination of applicability. You also want to put under findings that this includes, includes lot 19 and parcel 3A. You should also put in there that the property is not in a coastal pond overlay district. So does not require a enhanced nitrogen removal septic system?
Did you say there's no, there's no change in bedroom count, right?
Yeah, no change in count because they're converting the office and moving the credit to the garage, the garage addition. I think you should also put in the finding that the, the addition is not being accessed in any way from the house. And also find that the house does not have direct access to the garage, only the addition has access to the garage.
Very good. Anything else for findings? How about conditions? Certainly per plans?
Our plans, the erosion sediment controls, the deed, the deed restriction. And I just have one question on the deed restriction that was submitted. The, it just mentions that these, the living area, it only mentions the living area above garage will not be used. So they may have to change that line to the addition behind and above the garage.
We, we did update that at point today, yes.
All right, so per that, per that revised.
Yep, condition that the, the runoff of the new roof be put into the dry well connected. I think also put in the condition, even though we have the deed restriction, that there's no cooking facilities. And also put in the condition, home is to remain a single family use.
Good condition.
Because they're dealing with a raise and rebuild with that side yard setback is 6.5 and they're keeping, trying to keep it the same. I, I would, I think you'd want to have it as built to make sure there's no change in nonconformities.
Okay. Now, we've typically been adding into conditions and assessors prior to sign off.
Yeah, I can add that too. And then, and I think, do we have the one that Scott did about the no rentals?
Can certainly throw it in there if it's not already.
Might as well, might as well put it in.
Any change to the building has come back for us for any reason?
Absolutely. Anything else either for findings or conditions?
No, I think you may just, I don't know if you'll put this in, but we may want to put that. There seems not to be much definition on cooking facilities. So I don't know if you want to say that it will not have cooking facilities, including stoves, microwaves, convection ovens, et cetera.
A jazz.
A jazz, yeah.
Not an exhaustive list. But not to include. All right. All right. Anything else? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Ken and seconded by Scott. And once again, we'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
And Foreman, aye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, here and aye.
Bob?
I'm going to actually go as a nay, only because it doesn't flow from the main dwelling.
Okay. Scott?
Aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the motion passes unanimously, I'm sorry, not unanimously, it passes.
Did you get it?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We did get it and the motion passes four to one. Okay, Attorney Clark, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I, we greatly appreciate your time and I don't believe in before you again before the end of the year. So best wishes to everyone for a happy and healthy holiday season.
To you too. Okay, up next on the list, we have, going into our new public hearings, application 61-20, Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4 in T-Ticket.
So application number 61-20, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify that Echo Land Development LLC of East Falmouth, Mass, has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct 16 single-family dwellings. Four dwellings will be affordable. The subject property is Zero Percival Road, Lot 4, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals. Let's start with the planning board. Regarding project eligibility, Zero Percival Road, Falmouth. Zero Percival Road project was discussed at the 11/10, November 10th, Planning Board meeting, following a site visit and at subsequent meetings. And the board had the following comments and concerns regarding the project. The planning board stated that although the developer is going to make improvements over Percival Road and the town does need affordable housing, while the vote was not unanimous, the majority of the planning board does not support the project. The board did not feel that the proposed density was in line with the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding area. The proposed 16 lots are too dense and would result in too many trees needed to be cut down for the area. Due to the proposed density, the developer would need to strip the land of numerous trees. As such, the board would like to see a planting plan to ensure there is a vegetated buffer for the neighboring houses. The developer proposes to widen the roadway, but the entrance on either end of the road will still be functionally a one lane and therefore will present a safety issue for vehicular traffic. Additionally, due to the roadway length with no lighting, the board would like to see lighting attached to the roadway to make it safe. The board also discussed the need for added sidewalks or safer pedestrian travel. The board discussed that the road is basically a one-way street. The road ends in a very narrow, small manner and the access is poor. Cars are unable to pass by each other on the current street with existing conditions as they are. The board felt adding 16 units to an essentially one-lane street would only for a further crowding the road. The planning board also felt that if the zoning board of appeals is going to make a connection, if at all, through harness drive, then it should be an emergency-only access point. The connection should have a gate across it for emergency vehicles only and should not be utilized as a common access for people because of their, of the existence of the three daycare facilities on the road with 30-plus young people in attendance. Lastly, the board also noted that the condition for the location, as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, HPP, are not met with this location. The board stated it did not meet the plan in regards to serviceability, transportation and location. They felt that it was too far from amenities such as shopping centers, schools, library or other points of interest to exist without a car. And they would prefer to see 40B applications that do coincide and align with the approved HPP.
Bob, are you in between referrals right now?
Yes.
If Steve McKenzie is out there, he is the applicant's representative for this project. If you could just raise your hand so we can elevate you and it'll be a seamless transition by the time you're able to give your presentation. Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Great, the engineering. Law are going to be general comments, but there would be a more in-depth review of the project as required. Sewage, the application indicates there will be individual onsite subsurface sewage disposal systems for each lot. There are no details and the systems are not even schematically shown on any of the plans. We defer to the Health Department if the design of these systems should be part of an outside consultant review. We defer to the zoning boards if the information should be included on the plans. The site is mapped within the Great Pond and Little Pond Coastal Pond Overlay Districts. We recommend that the onsite sewage disposal plans be reviewed for compliance with any applicable requirements under Article 21 Coastal Pond Overlay Districts. Most of the site is mapped within the Water Resource Protection District. We recommend that the onsite sewage disposal plans be reviewed for compliance with any applicable requirements under Article 15 Water Resource Protection Districts. Water, the site plans show water main within the proposed road widening easement. However, there are no details for services, hydrants, details of the main, et cetera, that would typically be shown on the plans. We refer to the Water Department if the system should be part of the outside consultant. We defer to the zoning board if the information should be included on the plans. Parking and access, the site plan shows no details for driveways or parking on the lots. We recommend additional information be shown on the plans. The plans and report refer to a 22-foot wide road widening easement. However, there doesn't appear to be an indication that Percival Road's surface will be widened. No details, no description, no schematic, nothing indicating that a wider roadway will be constructed for access to these lots, just that there will be an easement. Does the existing way meet what the town typically requires for access to the lots? Are there plans to widen the roadway surface? Are there plans to pave the roadway and add drainage? We recommend that this be clarified and additional information be shown on the plans. The site plan does not show work in the public right-of-way of Trotting Park Road. If Percival Road is upgraded, reconstructed or widened, work may be required in the Trotting Park Road right-of-way. If there will be work within the Trotting Park right-of-way, we request the Zoning Board of Appeals either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit or a street opening permit from the Engineering Department prior to closing the hearings for this comprehensive permit, or that the board include the following condition in the permit if approved. Condition would be the applicant. Condition would be the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or a street opening permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall ensure that the work is completed as approved by the Engineering Division and is issued permit. Percival Road is a private way. Therefore, any driveways from lots would not require a permit from the Engineering Division. Similarly, any work within Percival Road would not require a street opening permit from the Engineering Division. The town has requested that the applicant include a connection to Harness Drive as part of this project. The applicant states that they have no rights to access the Harness Drive right-of-way. Should the town accept Harness Drive as a public way in the future, connection through to Percival would be ideal. These plans could be revised to provide a right-of-way between Percival Road and Harness Drive without a roadway constructed in it without loss of a lot. The undeveloped parcel A could be reduced or omitted to provide the right-of-way, or additional emergency access could be provided in this right-of-way by constructing a driveway and gate at Harness Drive with access granted to the Falmouth Fire and Rescue. We defer to the zoning board of appeals if connection to Harness Drive should be explored further. We recommend that Falmouth Fire Rescue be consulted and the outside review consultant weigh in on this topic. As proposed and according to the town's address policy, each individual lot will be assigned a numerical even-numbered address at the time of the building permit sign-off by the Engineering Division. Based on historical information in our office, the original nineteen-twenty-seven assessor's maps, plan, and road directories, the road used to access this parcel is not, is not what was known as Percival Road. Percival Road ran in a southwesterly direction from Sandwich Road, straight through to Trotting Park Road, which was Locust Field Road. Mill Road ran easterly from Trotting Park Road, which was Locust Field Road, and passed this way. And this way is labeled Goat Alley, running southeasterly from Mill Road to Percival Road. Percival Road does not appear in the original nineteen-fifty-six Highways and Byways of Falmouth. The next road directory published in nineteen-seventy-four lists Percival Road running southwesterly to Locust Field Road and being developed, which is paved. The nineteen-seventy-nine and nineteen-eighty-seven listings are the same. The next directory compilation in nineteen-ninety-four lists Percival Road running westerly and southerly from Sandwich Road to Trotting Park Road. This is how it has been since nineteen-ninety-four. There are various plans at the parcel registry of deeds and in the Engineering Office with conflicting information on the names of these ways. Number thirty-two Percival Road is accessed via the original Percival Road surface that extends beyond the bend behind the Cape Verdean Club. It is not clear exactly when, how, or why this stretch of road was named Percival Road in the road directory and plans, or if it was officially changed. Perhaps the Planning Department of Town Clerk has information on the change. We defer to the zoning board of appeals to determine if this roadway should be renamed and the original Percival Way retained. With the addition of sixteen new homes, we recommend that Falmouth Fire Rescue be consulted for emergency response and addressing purposes. Snow removal services are provided by the town for Percival Road in this development as proposed. That will not change. Trash pickup is provided by the town for Percival Road in this development as proposed. That will not change. Each house will have trash picked up at the end of their driveway at Percival Road. Will there be a Rosewood Estate sign? Will there be streetlights added to Percival Road? Will there be streetlights? Will there be street trees added to Percival Road? We defer to the zoning board of appeals if these features should be included in the project and this information added to the application in the plans. Rating and drainage. The site plan does not include great grading details. We defer to the zoning board if the revised plans with this information should be submitted for review. There's no storm water management plan or calculations included in the submission. We refer to the zoning board of appeals that the revised plans and calculations should be submitted for review. There is no erosion and sediment control information included in the application. We recommend erosion and sediment controls are included for this project. We recommend the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls described in the attached document. This should be required for not only the individual lot work, but also any roadway and utility construction in Percival Way. A construction entrance on Percival Way at Trotting Park Road is recommended unless or until Percival Road is fully paved. We recommend limiting construction access to the project via Trotting Park Road only. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the attached soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. We recommend that review and inspections be performed by an outside review consultant. General comments. It does not appear that all information required by the filing by three-point-oh filing, time limits, and notice under the Town of Falmouth zoning board of appeals permit procedural rules has been included in the application. We recommend the application be reviewed and any additional information required be submitted for review. The site is mapped within the Great Pond and Little Pond Coastal Pond Overlay Districts. We recommend that the project be reviewed with compliance with any applicable requirements under Article twenty-one Coastal Pond Overlay Districts. Most of the site is mapped within the Water Resource Protection District. We recommend the project be reviewed for compliance with any applicable requirements under Article fifteen Water Resource Protection Districts. This site is mapped within the Foraging Area Two Wildlife Corridor. We recommend that the project be reviewed for compliance with any applicable requirements under Article twenty Wildlife Corridor. For informational purposes and to avoid possible confusion, the assessor's map and GIS parcel layouts do not match the A and R subdivision of the lots in two thousand. Registry Plan Book five-eight-seven, page thirty-nine. Parcel four is larger than shown on the town information. It isn't clear what the unnamed table that contains the column percentage coverage is for. The values in percentage coverage appear to be the percent area each lot is of the full current Lot Four parcel and not the coverage. The site plan does not show structures on the abutting lots. Adding these to plans may aid the zoning board of appeals in assessing impact to abutters. The landscape plan is basic and lacks detail. We defer to zoning board if additional information is required. The outside consultant should review the plans and documents to see if all comments made by the town manager and town departments are addressed satisfactorily prior to a final vote. This review is preliminary in nature. The purpose of aiding an outside consultant in a full review as requested by us. If the project is not referred to an outside consultant for review, we request the zoning board of appeals refer the project back to engineering for a full review. Should this go out for review by an outside consultant, we are available to go over our comments. Conservation staff have no comments at this time as the project seems to be outside of conservation jurisdiction. No comments from assessing. This is a referral from the Affordable Housing Committee, AHC. Following are the final approved comments from the AHC on the Percival Road forty-B project due for submission to the ZBA by eleven-twenty-six. The project includes sixteen single-family three-bedroom homes, four of them affordable, aimed at eighty percent AMI. Market cost equals four forty-nine K. Affordable housing cost is two hundred and twenty K. We see no mention of a homeowners association being part of this project, but please confirm for the record that there will be no homeowners association or related fees for any of the sixteen properties. We are pleased that the four affordable homes, number three, ten, eleven, and fifteen, will be dispersed in the community and not clustered. We're also pleased that two of the affordable homes will include a garage and the other two will include an extra half-bath, allowing for some choice for the four qualified eighty percent AMI buyers. The town has asked and the AHC supports that all sixteen of these homes should be visitable and at least one should be accessible. Please confirm for the record that this is the plan and that it goes to handicap status. We note that the backs of all sixteen homes seem to face south, which is good for possible future installation of solar panels. There is no monitoring agent or lottery agent that we could find listed in the plans, both of which are important for the success of a forty-B project. Finally, we note that the anticipated profit margin for this project is thirteen point nineteen percent and that the minimum required number of units are affordable four of sixteen at twenty-five percent of the project. Please consider adding a fifth affordable home in place of one of the twelve market-rate homes. If the home is priced for buyers at a hundred percent AMI, it should not result in a big economic loss and it will help diversify the community further and meet the housing needs of an average family in Falmouth. There are some letters that I'll go over now. There are five letters with objections and comments and concerns. There were two letters of support to whom it may concern. And this is from Heidi Ingram. I am an abutter of the aforementioned plan to build forty-B construction. My address is sixteen Trotting Lane, T-Ticket. I have resided there for twenty-four years and have owned the property for over half of that time. My concern with this construction of the forty-B residential area is the area of the proposed site is already heavily congested with three daycares operating off Trotting Lane and Harness Drive. Myself, my sister, and my niece all own and operate large family daycares. I've been operating for over twenty-one years, my sister Kathleen Scala for over forty years, and my niece Jennifer Scala for over fifteen. We all have been in this area for the duration of our businesses and are all the butters to the proposed site. With all of us having large family childcare at any given time, there could be up to thirty children in our combined care. That being said, the traffic from daycare parents as well as the traffic from others who reside in the area, combined with the traffic of the residential forty-B site, in my opinion, creates a hazardous situation for the children in our care as well as the residents in the area. Recently, there have been two similar sites constructed in a radius of less than a mile off Trotting Park Road, which are also both located less than a mile from the proposed site off of Percival Road. I think it would be great disservice to Falmouth taxpaying individuals that resided in the area to allow yet another forty-B constructed site to be built in an already heavily congested area. Sincerely, Heidi Ingram. Next one is from Corinne Swain of one forty-nine Percival Road. To the Board of Appeals, I am writing to you today with my concerns for the forty-B project that is being proposed for Percival Road. My family and I currently live directly across from the land being proposed from this project. Our biggest concern is the traffic. Currently, the road has two entrances. Both entrances will be greatly affected by the additional vehicle traffic that will be added to the road. The entrance off Sandwich Road is very narrow and can only have one car pass at a time. There's been many times I've had to back up on the Sandwich Road in order to let another car pass. This entrance is used by all residents on Percival Road, the Cape Verdean Club members and guests and people cutting through to Trotting Park Road. The entrance will not be changed for this project. The Cape Verdean Club has several gatherings throughout the summer, one being the hoop contest. During these events, the road is overwhelmed with traffic and people, which makes this entrance unusable for the day. We have no problem using the other entrance and have been doing it for years, but add another thirty-plus cars and this would create a disaster for the entrance on Trotting Park. Not only is the entrance difficult, but there is a sharp corner that turns onto Percival that again, only one car can pass at a time. There's been many times that two cars come head-to-head because it can be difficult to see the other car coming. This corner will also not be changed for the project. The second entrance is off Trotting Park Road. The road, from my understanding, will be widened here. Even the widened road will make it for a dangerous entrance and exit. To the left when exiting, there are several bushes in a slight corner that make it difficult to see any traffic coming. Traffic that is extremely fast. The same goes when trying to enter. I understand that there is another access point being proposed through Trotting Lane. Trotting Lane is narrow as well. The additional traffic will be a burden to the residents on that private road and the three daycares that are currently there. I strongly advise that a site visit be done and that that visit be done during the times of three-thirty to five-thirty so you can understand the current traffic and difficulties already. The first site visit with the planning board was completed early afternoon when no cars were traveling because everyone was at work. And then this is from Attorney Brian Wall, Troy Wall Associates. Dear Chairman Hurry, please be advised, I represent Daniel Colturi, owner of one eighty-seven Percival Road, Patricia A. Harris, owner of one eighty-one Percival Road, and William and Margaret Overholz, owners of one ninety-three Percival Road, here and after abutters. Each of the said properties directly abuts the land that is subject to the proposed development. Each abutter objects to the proposed by Echo Land Development LLC for the reasons set forth herein. The application for comprehensive permit proposes development on a five-point-five-acre parcel of land situated in an agricultural B district, Section two forty dash thirty-four, a Water Resource Protection District, Section two forty dash seventy-one, a Coastal Pond Overlay District, Section two forty dash ninety-seven, and a Wildlife Corridor, Section two forty dash ninety-one. As of right development of the property would allow two single-family dwellings on two eighty-thousand-plus-square-foot lots. The applicant is proposing pursuant to General Laws forty-B, a subdivision of sixteen sixteen thousand square-foot lots and construction of sixteen three-bedroom, single-family dwellings. A Percival Road does not provide legal access or frontage to the proposed development. The applicant's proposed means of access and the proposed frontage for the sixteen lots includes Percival Road and existing private gravel way as well as additional intervening private property and a portion of the five-point-five-acre parcel identified as widening easement, which will reportedly add additional width to Percival Road. The applicant's proposal is however, illusory because the five-point-five-acre parcel has no rights to Percival Road. Indeed, Percival Road is a twelve-foot-wide private easement located entirely on the property of the abutters. Percival Road does not provide any rights of access to the subject parcel. The abutters have reviewed the titles to their property and that of the subject property and confirmed that their titles derive from a different source than the subject property. Further, the research confirmed that Percival Road is a twelve-foot-wide easement created by reservation in a deed dated January thirteenth, nineteen twenty-four, recorded in Book four oh three, page two fifty-nine. It's attached as Exhibit A. The easement was reserved by William E. Lawrence over a twenty-two-plus-acre parcel of land that he owned as a means of access on foot or with vehicles over a strip of land twelve feet wide along the southwestern line of his premises. Since the applicant has no legal rights in Percival Road, the plans presented for review cannot be approved. The applicant must modify the plans in a manner such that access for the proposed lots and dwellings is provided entirely upon and within the five-point-five-acre parcel. Further, because the development parcel has no right of access to the private easement, any proposed road located on the development parcel cannot be connected the twelve-foot right-of-way. In addition, any traffic generated by this dense development and directed onto the easement would be legally prohibited because it would overburn the private way. Two, the applicant has failed to list all waivers required for the proposed project. An applicant for comprehensive permit, they request waivers as listed in the application, seven sixty CMR fifty-six dash oh five, Section eight. The applicant has failed to list all the waivers that are required for this proposed project. The application must be deemed incomplete until such time as an applicant lists each and every waiver that is needed for the project to proceed and until the applicant includes mitigation measures to reduce impacts of each waiver. The applicant is proposing a non-conforming sixteen-lot subdivision, but has not requested any waivers from the Falmouth subdivision regulations. A cursory review of the subdivision regulation suggests that waivers are required from the following. Section three oh five twenty-four A one, "Street shall be designated and located to be continuous within existing streets insofar as practical and shall compose a convenient system with connections adequate to ensure free and safe movement." Section three oh five dash twenty-four B one A, "Street shall be designed..." Section three oh five dash twenty-four B one A, street shall be designed with a layout of forty-four feet. Section three oh five twenty-four B one B, width of pavement shall be twenty-two feet. Section three oh five twenty-four B eight, if a street layout at the entrance to the subdivision abuts property not owned by the subdivider, the width of the layout shall be sixty feet from the first two hundred feet from the intersecting road. The entrance road should be located within the layout so that the extra sixteen feet of width will be used to provide additional buffering from the road for the abutting property owner. Section three oh five dash twenty-four D two, dead-end streets shall not be longer than five hundred feet. Section three oh five twenty-four D three, dead-end streets shall provide a turnaround with a radius of at least sixty feet. Section three oh five dash twenty-four E, when the physical condition of the width of a public way from which the subdivision has its access is considered by the board to be inadequate to carry the traffic expected to be generated by such a subdivision, the board may require the applicant to dedicate a strip of land for the purpose of widening the abutting public way to a width at least as great as required within the subdivision. The application lists three waivers from the zoning bylaw, all from section two forty dash sixty-seven A, one minimum lot area, eighty thousand square feet to sixteen thousand square feet, two, minimum lot width, two hundred feet to seventy-seven feet, and three, minimum frontage, a hundred and fifty feet to seventy-seven feet. The application fails to list the following additional waivers that appear to be necessary. Section two forty dash ninety-three, all subdivisions of land within a wildlife corridor must submit development plans to the National Resources Department for recommendations. Two forty dash ninety-four A one, subdivisions of more than five acres in the Ag B zone shall be s- shall submit a preliminary cluster subdivision to the planning board. Section two forty ninety-four A two, the applicant shall prepare a corridor plan which shall be submitted to the approval of the reviewing agency under the criteria in A two A one and in A two A two, and shall establish a wildlife corridor in compliance with section two forty dash ninety-four A two A through C in three to four. Section two forty ninety-nine A, subdivisions greater than five lots or greater than five acres in a coastal pond overlay district must submit an analysis of development impact as specified by section two forty, one thirteen C one, two, three, four A, B, and C with the application made to the reviewing board. Section two forty one hundred A, subdivisions in a coastal pond overlay district shall have shared treatment facilities. If the applicant demonstrates that such facilities are not feasible, individual nitrogen removing onsite septic systems shall be required instead. Three, the proposed project should be denied because it's inconsistent with local needs and local concerns. The Board of Appeals may deny an application for a comprehensive permit if it reasonably determines that the proposed project is inconsistent with local needs. Uh, that's, uh, see general laws, uh, chapter forty B, section twenty-three, seven sixty CMR fifty-six point oh five, eight B three. Uh, it must be consistent with local needs, which means local requirements and regulations imposed on a project are reasonable in view of the regional need for low and moderate income housing. Considered with the number of low-income persons in the affected municipality and with local concerns. And if such local requirements and regulations are applied as equally as possible to both subsidized and unsubsidized housing. Local concerns means the need to protect the health and safety of the occupants of a proposed project or of the residents of the municipality, to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open spaces. The abutters contend that the project is inconsistent with local needs and local concerns for the following reasons. One, the project is inconsistent with the purposes of the Water Resource Protection Districts. The Water Resource Protection District, WRPD, was adopted to promote the health and safety and general welfare of the community by ensuring an adequate quality and quantity of drinking water to conserve natural resources of the town and to prevent temporary and permanent contamination of the environment. The WRPD effectuates these purposes by increasing the ma- minimum lot size in the A- AGB district to eighty thousand square feet with a minimum frontage of a hundred and fifty feet and minimum lot width two hundred and by limiting lot coverage to forty percent. The applicant is proposing lots that are sixteen thousand square feet, only twenty percent the size required by the WRPD. Similarly, the proposed lots have seventy-seven feet of frontage, only fifty percent of the required by the WRPD. And the lots will be seventy-seven feet wide, only thirty-eight point five percent of the width required by WRPD. The sixteen thousand square foot lots are grossly inconsistent with the local concerns embodied in the WRPD. Two, the project is inconsistent with the purposes of the Coastal Pond Overlay District. The Coastal Pond Overlay District, CPOD, was adopted to preserve water quality in coastal ponds and harbors and the provisions of the CPOD apply to subdivisions of greater than five lots or greater than five acres. In order to protect water quality, the COPD requires such subdivision to have shared wastewater treatment facilities. If the applicant demonstrates such facilities are not feasible, individual nitrogen removing onsite systems shall be required instead. The proposed project has neither a shared wastewater treatment facility nor denitrifying septic systems. The proposed project has sixteen individual conventional Title V systems, each with a three-bedroom capacity. This is inconsistent with the local concerns embodied in the COPD. Three, the project is inconsistent with the purposes of the Wildlife Corridor Regulations. The Wildlife Corridor Regulations were adopted to protect wildlife by requiring development to be designed to coexist with wildlife in important wildlife habitat by establishing permanent corridors for wildlife feeding, breeding, and movement. These purposes are accomplished by requiring dedicated open space areas for wildlife. The proposed project has no dedicated open space for wildlife. It is thus inconsistent with the local concerns embodied in the Wildlife Corridor Regulations. Four, the project is inconsistent with the local comprehensive plan and the Falmouth Housing Production Plan. The local comprehensive plan states the affordable housing should be located in areas with available infrastructure. Thus, affordable housing should be within walking distance to schools, houses of worship, shops, and other services. The development fails to satisfy this requirement. As noted in the Board of Selectments or Fur Letter to Mass Housing dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty, the project is located more than a mile to the nearest store to buy any basic provisions or any schools or parks. Many stretches of this fifteen-plus minute walk do not have sidewalks. The Housing Production Plan states Falmouth is in need of one- and two-bedroom affordable housing, not three-bedroom housing. The proposed three-bedroom affordable dwellings are inconsistent with no local needs. In conclusion, the abutters respectfully request that the Board of Appeals to deny this proposed project because, one, the applicant has no rights to Percival Road and may not utilize Percival Road as a means of access or frontage. Two, the applicant has failed to identify all waivers necessary for the project to proceed and concomitant proposed mitigation. Three, the proposed project is utterly inconsistent with Falmouth's local concerns as codified in the WRPD, CPOD, and the Wildlife Corridor Regulations. And four, the proposed project is inconsistent with the Falmouth's local comprehensive plan and housing production plan because it fails to promote the affordable housing needs of Falmouth, namely one bedroom and two-bedroom units, not three-bedroom units, and because it isn't in, it is not within walking distance to schools, churches, shops, and services, and that was submitted by Brian Wall with attachments. Uh, and there is also note here that Brian Wall will be, um, attending tonight on behalf of his clients. Uh, this is coming from Susan Burnett of one sixty-nine Trotting Park Road. The proposed forty B development of Percival Road is very bad idea. Let me count the ways. There are already six dense developments within a two-mile radius, all very close to Long Pond and Mayor's Pond, which is our main source of drinking water. We have passed the saturation point for this type of development, and I'm wondering whether this area is being discriminated against. We are zoned agricultural B and have a mix of small farms and residential homes. The ecosystem is being gradually destroyed by increasing dense development. The area is full of wildlife, including box turtles, who are currently on the endangered list. We haven't seen pheasants or quail in a very long time. Acres zoning was put in place for good reasons, and using forty B to bypass the zoning is hurting the quality of life for all, except the builder who profits. There are other specific concerns for this proposal. Percival Road, formerly known as Goat Alley, is a narrow cartway where most of the house lots cross over and include a portion of what is used as the road. The road is so narrow that two cars can't pass without one pulling over. Large trucks will fill the entire road. A few homes built in this parcel seems reasonable. A forty B with sixteen buildings is outrageous. There is an aquifer running beneath the lots where the developer is proposing to build sixteen houses, and the land will be destroyed. Look ahead to protect the natural environment, the drinking water, the neighborhood, our town. Do the right thing and oppose this development. Please come here and drive down Percival Road to see for yourself. Again, Susan Burnett, one sixty-nine Trotting Park Road. Uh, this is from Deborah C. Witter, two eleven Trotting Park Road. Uh, Chairman Hurry, I'm concerned about the impact that the construction development of the above referenced project will have on my abutting residential property, house, barn, and sheds. I requested the building permit will indicate in writing that the developer named Echo Land Development LLC slash Steve McKenzie plant a buffer barrier of live green trees, preferably Leland Pines or Arbiviti, seven to eight feet tall at their cost along the abutting property line prior to excavation of the property. The tree barrier will help cut down the construction contaminant debris and dust coming from the site. I also requested developer at their cost be responsible for power washing my newly painted buildings, home, barn, and sheds at the completion of the project. I request, as a major property owner, abutting to name construction site, that all construction vehicles be restricted from entering and traveling to the construction site via T-Ticket Highway and Trotting Park Road entry. Please restrict the construction vehicles to access the construction site through Sandwich Road and Percival Way. This will preserve the integrity of our residential road. There is a sign posted at Trotting Park Road, no truck throughway. I would like a response sent to me in writing assuring me that these stipulations will be agreed upon and adhered to throughout the duration of Echo Land Development LLC construction projects. And then this letter is from, uh, Donald Drew and Michelle Drew. Dear zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing this letter to express our complete support of the proposed project located on Percival Road. We live at number three Harness Drive T Ticket. We are direct abutters to this project. When we learned of the project, we reached out to Mr. Montero to find out more about it, and within a day, Mr. Montero was at our door to sit with us and go over the project and to share the rationale for the layout he is proposing. The project offers much-needed housing without overbuilding the area, which coupled with what we think are two well-thought-out and well-designed house plans make this project very easy to support. That being said, the one issue that troubles us is the thought of opening up Harness Drive as a way into the project. We have a dead-end street with three houses on it, two of which are much-needed daycares along with ours. Bringing more cars down the street would be a dangerous proposition. We believe an unnecessary one by looking at the proposed layout. Again, we are very in support of Mr. Montero in the Percival Road project, but would ask that the thought of opening up Harness Drive as a throughway should be reconsidered. And, uh, David, uh, Donald and Michelle Drew of Three Harness Drive. And then this one is coming from Doug Azarian, Killen Grover Real Estate, fifty-six Grant and a Half. It doesn't give a resident address, so I don't know if they're a resident. Uh, to whom it may concern, my name is Doug Azarian. I'm a local realtor and have been working with the town of Falmouth for the past thirty-three years. I've been involved in the Realtor Association, local, state, national levels, sitting on many committees and frequently dealing with the issue of affordable housing. We have lobbied local legislators, state governors, and the US Congress on this issue consistently. Most of us would agree that there is a need for affordable housing in the town of Falmouth. And as prices continue to climb, as they currently are, more than fourteen percent in twenty-twenty over twenty-nineteen, there'll be even more demand for affordable housing. Young families are having an extremely difficult time to find a home they can afford. There just seems to be no supply. We really need to keep our schoolteachers, firemen, police, and service providers in town. I recently became aware of the affordable housing proposal for Percival Road in Falmouth. I would hope that the town would be in favor of such a proposal. It is important to know that a three-bedroom home is much more desired and practical as it allows a family to grow. Two-bedroom homes force a growing family back into the real estate market and are much more difficult to resell. While a three-bedroom home is slightly more expensive to build, it helps promote stability in the community. Most families can settle into a three-bedroom home for many years. A three-bedroom home is also easier to sell and provides equity to the owner and the community. A three-bedroom home is a better investment for families and for the stability of the community. Freestanding homes are also more desired as they remove the complexities of associations and shared expenses that are out of the owner's control. Should interest rates rise back, lack of affordable housing will be a bigger problem. In summary, I hope you will support the affordable housing proposal for Percival Road. Again, Doug Azarian, and it's listing a business office at fifty-six Grant and a Half. And that's all for now.
How do, how do we work it out for you, Bob, on that one? All right, uh, so the voting members on this application are the regular voting members. Uh, and before we get underway, just to, um, keep things organized, uh, I know that Mr. McKenzie will represent the project on behalf of his client uh, for the usual fifteen minutes. I do know that Attorney Wall, uh, who is representing some of the butters, he requested to speak as well. Uh, we typically do entertain that. Uh, and then we will go on to board questions and, uh, public comment, and I'll address public comments, uh, later on once again. But, uh, if we hear from Mr. McKenzie first and then a lot sometime to Mr. Wall, uh, I'm sorry, Attorney Wall, I, I think that might be good. Uh, so how does everyone feel about that? Good? All right.
That's right.
Mr. McKenzie, you're with us? Mr. McKenzie? Looks like he has his audio working. Shouldn't be a problem. Mr. McKenzie? Know if he's having any issues. Tom, is there anything we can do to help him out if he is having any issues?
I will go ahead and, uh, message him some quick directions for getting on a phone call instead.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, so Steve is saying from the chat, we can see you were on the phone. So, Mr. McKenzie, it looks like that you should be able to speak to us. This will just stand by as Tom tries to help.
So my only comment as a chairman is if there is problem with Mr. McKenzie and we can only hear him by audio, then there will be no shared screens or the ability to display the presentation of the project?
Yeah, that, that would be correct if he, if he's not able to do that.
And that's something that we will need.
Just because I think it's going to be a bit quicker, I'll walk through the directions on here. Uh, Mr. McKenzie, on your screen, if you could look on the bottom left, there is a microphone icon if you're on the computer. If you could select the up arrow next to that, and then there is an option to switch to phone audio. It'll present you with a list of phone numbers. You can dial any of those. Then it'll prompt you for the meeting ID and the following participant ID, and that should allow you to join via your phone call.
I want some whatever Ed's eating.
Good evening, Mr. Harry.
Mr. McKenzie, we can hear you.
Good evening. How are you, boss? The difficulty?
No worries, and, uh, we're getting a little bit of an echo and what, uh, Tom has told us before, if you have multiple applications of Zoom open, uh, we would be getting an echo, so if you could just use one, uh, one device, I guess.
Mr. Harry, is that better now?
It sure is. Go right ahead.
Evening, uh, fellow board members. Uh, my name is, for the record, my name is Stephen McKenzie, and I represent Echo Land Development LLC. And I'm here with Edward Montero, who is the principal of the LLC. Uh, we're seeking a comprehensive permit under chapter forty D for a sixteen single family three bedroom, um, development on five point five acres of vacant agricultural, uh, these own land. Uh, it said each of the homes will be a three bedroom, but required to build a three bedroom septic system for each one of these. It's going to be a mix of case style and rent style homes averaging between fourteen hundred and eighteen hundred square feet. Coming in at a really low density, probably the lowest density of any chapter forty B project that's been proposed in the town of Falmouth, with less than three units per acre. Um, and as far as some of the other letters that were written in about how dense this is, this is sixteen houses and they're surrounded by sixteen houses. So it's the same number of units being proposed as all of the abutting houses that surround us. Um, when we get to Mr., I'm sorry, Bob, we get to Mr. Attorney Wall's letter, we just received that, I guess it was written on the eighth and filed with the town yesterday. Haven't had a chance to go through it, but haven't had a chance to do any research to check. Um, the, whether or not, um, he's accurate with respect to the easement on Percival Road. Uh, it's our understanding and belief that we also have similar grant on, on Percival Road. Um, it has, people have gone out there purchasing the property from. Um, it's our plan to widen that road and pave the road. Uh, we've also have submitted two engineering engineering plans which show, uh, drainage and everything else in there, water services, all those type of things. They have been submitted. Um, there's also been plans shown, um, that do show the driveways, uh, and the landscaping. Uh, it's our intent to bring, uh, gas service up to the street, which doesn't presently exist, as well as bringing in town water and fire hydrants. Um, in the planning boards referral, there was a request for, uh, street lighting. If you happen to drive up there, you'll see, uh, on Percival Road, there are four streetlights, um, across the sixteen lots presently. Um, currently it's in eighteen, twelve to eighteen foot gravel and paved way. Um, our plan is to widen it with a twenty-two foot road riding easement, so it will become a much safer road, which will allow access in both directions. Uh, we recognize that the terminus of Percival Road beyond our project out at Sandwich Road is narrow, but we'll be widening it at the other end of Trotting Park.
I just got a question for the chairman. Does, does the applicant have the ability to do this visually at all? Because proceeding with a forty B procedure, audio only, is extremely difficult.
Yeah, so, Mr. McKenzie, do you have the ability for audio? Uh, I'm sorry, for video?
Video.
Video. Hope we didn't lose them again. Mr. McKenzie, you there?
Chairman, are there any other cases we can take out of order? We haven't opened this one, really, have we? Till you get away?
I mean, we have opened it. Um, we do have that other public hearing.
Yeah, I think we should table this until we can get the technical difficulties fixed.
All right. Unfortunately, I think that's what we'll have to do. Uh, so would anyone like to make that motion then?
Make the motion.
So since, since the applicant right now doesn't have the ability to present this visually in audio, we will, uh, table this till after the next hearing to see if the applicant can get a better connection and be able to present this evening.
I'll second it.
Very good. So the, uh, motion is made to, uh, table this application at the moment and take application sixty-four dash twenty Munier, twenty Moreland Road in Falmouth out of order. Uh, that motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Hey, Dan Curran, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert D, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So this application is tabled at the moment while, uh, the applicant works on the audio visual, audio visual issue. And we will be taking application sixty-four dash twenty Munier, two hundred Moreland Road, Falmouth, out of order.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify the Jan C. and Robert S. C. Munier of Falmouth, Mass, have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash sixty-eight A eight, two forty dash twenty-three I five B, and twenty-two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to allow an accessory apartment within the existing detached garage structure on subject property known as two hundred Moreland Road, Falmouth, Mass. Uh, for referrals. Engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Moreland Road and Elm Road are public rights of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public rights of way. Four, the plan shows stone retaining walls within the Moreland public right of way. Is there a license for this? Five, based on the town's address policy, the main house will remain two hundred Moreland Road. The accessory apartment will become two hundred A Moreland Road. The engineering division will assign the address when the applicant comes in for sign off of the building permit. We request the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, applicant shall post the address for this residence per section ninety-nine one. A fixing of legible numbers required in time limit for compliance. Conservation staff, there's no comments on the proposed project as it appears to be outside of conservation jurisdiction. Uh, from the water department, this, this addition will need to have a new water service installed. And then there were two referrals from the health department. One was updated. The original referral was sent twelve one twenty. And it said the septic system installed in twenty-ten is suitable for five bedrooms and the property is currently four. It appears that since they are increasing bedrooms for the accessory apartment on an enhanced nitrogen removal system would need to be installed. Properties located in the Oyster Pond Coastal Pond overlay and the current density is greater than one bedroom for ten thousand square foot of lot space. And this is the excerpt in the bylaw. The total number of bedrooms on the lot shall not exceed four when the lot contains less than twenty thousand square feet. A property that has a pre-existing bedroom count that exceeds four per twenty thousand can maintain that number of current bedrooms but cannot increase. Whether as a matter of right or by special permit, accessory apartments located on lots subject to the provisions of the Water Resource Protection or Coastal Pond Overlay Districts, the total number of bedrooms shall not exceed one per ten thousand square feet of lot area. Properties that pre-exist with a den, with a density greater than one per ten thousand square feet in a coastal pond district can maintain their existing bedroom count but cannot increase. And then he also mentions both principal dwelling and accessory are connected. Uh, has something to do if they're connected, but they're not. An onsite septic system with enhanced nitrogen removal, uh, would be done by the board of health. But then there was an update to the referral. And this came in again by the health agent, and this time it says the septic installed in twenty-ten is suitable for five bedrooms and the property currently is four in the main house and the room above the detached garage appears to meet both title five and Falmouth local reg, regulations definition as a bedroom. Therefore, the property has five bedrooms. Since the proposal does not increase the bedroom count, the septic would not need to be altered or have enhanced nitrogen removal added. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. The applicant filed a site plan review, uh, with the planning board. We actually Uh, this was from the planning board, their decision. At its meeting of December eighth, twenty-twenty, the planning board voted to approve the application of Robert Munier under article thirty-nine, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for planned entitled plot plan, pose accessory apartment, two hundred Moreland Road. Uh, with a floor plan for the detached structure entitled Munier Studio Apartment. These are their findings. The applicant, Robert Munier, seeks to construct a studio apartment above an already existing detached garage which contains an existing single family residence. Parcel zone resident B and in the Oyster Pond coastal overlay and contains thirty-one thousand seven hundred nine square feet of land. The proposed accessory studio apartment within the garage is three hundred and twenty square feet. Existing finished square footage of the primary residence is three thousand nine hundred and forty square feet and contains four bedrooms. The proposed percentage of total floor area of the accessory apartment is eight point twelve percent of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. The applicant's attention is directed to the engineering department's referral dated November tenth, twenty-twenty. In the health department referral dated November third, twenty-twenty, the referral indicates that the septic system installed in twenty-ten is suitable for a five bedroom property. The engineering department's review included the stone wall located on the property is in the public right of way. The board reviewed the stone wall and stated the wall is part in the is part and parcel of what the property is. It would like to see the wall remain. Planning board considered the above referenced referrals and applicant's response and plan revisions in its decision to the matter. The board will condition its decision accordingly. Planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all requirements and findings pursuant to section two forty dash twenty-three I of the zoning bylaw. Here's the conditions. The plan should be constructed as provided. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to two forty dash one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied with the conditions of the approval and predecessor, and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be permitted annually to the building commissioner signed by the property owner attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as, as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented but not both during the five months the owner occupant may be absent. Rental period should be no less than six months. And weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals so called are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as a commercial accommodations at any time. Four, upon completion of construction, applicant shall post the address for the residence per section ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers, time limit for performance. Five, the applicant shall install a new water service for the project. And six, the applicant shall submit a license for the stone wall that is located in the public right of way. If the applicant does not have a license for the wall, then they shall apply for the board of selecting for your license. That's it for the referrals.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have Mr. Bunker. And you're muted right now.
Okay, after I mean, thank you for the record. My name is, uh, Tom Bunker. I'm here, um, tonight, uh, with the architect for the project who happens to be Beatrice Bunker. Um, we, uh, we together worked on this project, uh, BSS Design, uh, did the survey and, uh, Beatrice designed the, uh, little, little accessory apartment. So I can, uh, I'll share my screen and I'll show you a couple of pictures. Okay, see what we have on here now?
We do.
Okay, I'll just start out with the GIS map. You can see the, uh, just to show the surroundings and the, uh, the site here, uh, outlined in yellow. Actually, it's a we have the existing house, number two hundred Moreland Road, uh, circular driveway coming in, in and out the property. Oh, by the way, the stone walls are, are out here in Moreland Road where it's a landscape feature. I can point out one thing, and not that we're objecting to licensing it, but, uh, the town has these, this house is being built in nineteen twenty-five. And I can't say if, if the walls were built at that time or not, and, and Moreland Road was taken as a public way in nineteen twenty-six. So the house predated that being a public road and, you know, would be that those stone walls predated that also and uh, you know, if so, I think the town, you know, made the taking with, with the walls as they are. Um, but as I said, if we have to go to a selectman to, uh, get the license, uh, we will, we will do that. And we're up in this corner up on this side of the, uh, house, uh, looks a little odd, but that, that, this is the garage right here. And what the white parts are a couple of little dormers that are on there now. Uh, I can show you our site plan here, uh, which, uh, includes the, the house, the existing house and the garage in this location. Um, there are only two things being added to the, uh, footprint of the garage, and both of them are for means of, of egress. On the Moreland roadside, there's this, uh, uh, deck landing being added on this side of the house and on the, uh, or on the side of the garage and on the side of the garage closer to the house, which are not, not visible, uh, well, not very visible. The, another small deck and egress deck and steps down to grade. As every, uh, dwelling unit has to have two means of egress. Um, I can address the part for the accessory structure in the front yard where, uh, existing, the garage now is fifty-eight point six feet from the property from the street line. And this, uh, deck being added, the deck and the steps, uh, it will still be fifty-one and a half feet from the street line. The minimum setback The minimum setback for an excessive structure is fifty feet, so it does meet that requirement. It's not listed on this plan. But I have a. Show you also, you can, there's no mistaking what I said here, the, I have to have this here so I can remember. The average grade along the street-facing sites of the garage, that's on three sides. It's fifty-eight point two, the garage roof peak is elevation seventy-five point three. Therefore, the garage is seventeen point one feet tall. So that is almost five feet less than allowed in the zoning. And I'll point out too that the height of this building is not increasing. There are currently two dormers on the garage, on that floor above the garage. And. They are, they're kind of flat dormers, they don't go up to the peak of the roof, so it's all, the only change there is that the dormers will be. Lifted up, so they slope up toward the peak of the roof, but the peak of the roof will not be any taller than what it is now. So as far as an accessory structure in the front yard, it meets those requirements, it's fifty, more than fifty feet back. And it does not exceed the height limitation for an accessory structure. We have the dimensions of the floor area and the garage over here, the apartment and the garage below it. It's basically the garage is twenty-one, the foundation of the garage is twenty-one feet and the apartment up top is taking up sixteen point eight feet of that in width. It's only three hundred and twenty square feet, very small apartment. Have a couple of. Pictures I can go through quickly. So you see the existing, this dormer will get wider. It's fairly flat, it does not reach to the roof ridge. And so it's going to get wider and go up to the roof ridge, but as I said, it will not increase in height of the building. And this is the view from the house side. So where this window is will become a door, landing in this location above the first floor window. And then steps will go down where this, basically where this storage box is now. And there is a rose of Sharon Bush right there that will be removed for that. This is a view of the upper level, as you see, it's kind of a split level. This is an up close view from Moreland Road in this location. We intend to keep the trees. As a screen, as you can see, it'd be barely visible. And you can see relative to the neighbor, it's fairly small and it's kind of tucked in the woods there. The, some of the branches will have to be trimmed off, but we intend to keep as much as possible. Again, other than a deck being put in right here, slightly bigger than the steps are now. The trees don't have to come out and there's no increase in the footprint on this side of the house. These bushes will have to be trimmed back some also. This is the wall we're talking about, not a very big wall, you can see on both sides, Long Moreland Drive. There. I can get on to, if Beatrice, you want to talk about the, a little bit about the plans?
Yeah, for the record, my name is Beatrice Bunker, I'm the architect representing Mr. and Mrs. Munier. The space above the garage currently already exists, it's smaller and it has a bathroom and an open floor plan. And all we are basically doing is giving this current space a little bit more headroom by expanding the dormers. And it will include, instead of a powder room, it will include a small bathroom. A closet with a washer dryer hookup that's required for an accessory apartment. And a kitchen. Or kitchenette, I don't know how, what you're calling it, but we call it a kitchen with an apartment-sized little stove here. And the rest of it is an open floor plan and it will literally just have. A couch in there and a bed and it's, we have a built-in for the proposed little bookshelf. And an enlargement of the counter area that can have two bar stools or two counter stools for eating. And we're adding the deck facing the water with direct access down and they can connect to the main house. We are proposing this for Mr. Munier's and his son. But since we are proposing a kitchen, we felt this is a dwelling unit and he will have. Obviously then the option of renting it should their family situation change. We are not changing anything on the first floor, it's currently a double garage. And we have adequate parking and we went through planning board and got approved through the planning board for the parking situation. There is no designation on who is parking where, since this is a family member, but we have adequate parking for at least four cars. And as Tom already mentioned, we are not increasing the height, the ridge will stay, the whole character of the house will stay as it currently is and it will simply have more windows than the large dormer. That I think should cover it.
Yeah, and I'll just add a couple of things, basically in the criteria for special permit decision, adequacy of the site in terms of the. The, you know, the size of the property at all, I think is quite sizable enough, if you notice the very small size of. Of the garage and where the apartment is going, very small garage on the, the total site. We feel it have no impact on the traffic flow and safety, no impact on the character of the neighborhood, since all we're doing is adding, we're enlarging two dormers. Sewerage disposal system was just upgraded to Title V and, you know, just ten years ago, so that is. Certainly adequate, other utilities are adequate and we feel this will have certainly no detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Be virtually, virtually the same as what it is now. So, you know, I'll stop the share here and we'll take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bunker. Turn it to board questions, Ken, do you have anything?
My only question is deal with occupancy. Is the owner living in the main house more than seven months or is the expectation that the tenant or son in the studio will live there? What's, how does it?
The owner lives in the main house all year round, twelve months. He works at Hui, he's been there for a long time and their son, as far as the situation is now, is also a resident in Falmouth, but will move in there and live there for twelve months.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Ed, any questions?
No, it looks like it's pretty straightforward.
Very good. Mary, anything?
How many bedrooms do they currently have?
The main house currently has four bedrooms and I will stay and the, what we call the studio apartment is already there and that is the fifth room. Basically what we are adding is dormers and the kitchen. So the house has four and the apartment is the fifth.
So together, you're saying it's five bedrooms currently?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Bob, anything?
So does the current room over the garage, is that currently heated?
No, the room above the garage is currently not heated, but it will be, obviously.
So I guess just a quick comment, and I know it meets all the bylaws and I like the setup of the plan. The only difficulty I have with it is the change of the. Health agent that is considering that it's now a five-bedroom property now versus a four. And where I'm coming from is that. I was on the accessory apartment committee for what seemed like an eternity. We've gone over revisions and changes and a very large portion of those meetings. Were with the water quality in Virginia Valley Ayla. And one of the changes, which was in the first health referral. Was they were extremely concerned adding these fifth bedrooms without some kind of a denitrifying septic system. Especially in these overlay districts. And. It was discussed at great length. And we would not have had support from water quality. If that wasn't in addition to the accessory apartment bylaw, and I understand that the. The health agent has now said that he now considers it a bedroom. But if it doesn't have heat. I don't know where he's coming up with the definition. And. I just feel conflicted without the denitrifying system. Because I don't think that was a fifth bedroom. I think they're changing, you know, some of these definitions to try to see how we can fit projects in. And. We're seeing this on a lot of them, it's not this plan and it was the health agent's call, and he made what his call is. I just don't think his call is correct in this point, I think that it needs a denitrifying septic system because that was. Was one of the big intents when we were going to allow these apartments, if we got to these larger structures in these districts. So the only issue I have with the whole project is the determination that it currently has a five-bedroom, so he's going. With the two thousand and ten five-bedroom system versus requiring some kind of a denitrification.
You know, that's under the bylaws, that's kind of what I had looked at was. I. Three. J is specifically what I was curious about when I asked about the bedroom's number.
So when we met with the health department to clarify that, I think he did not know that there is a room above the garage already that's finished. And already has a bathroom. So it has been always used as such, this is all original construction. As a separate entry, has a bathroom, is completely finished and simply is not insulated and heated, but. So are many, many, many projects I have worked on that are, were summer cottages and then they become heated spaces and the septic never had to change, we just heated the space. So I'm not really understanding the concern and I think when we talked with Mr. Gann, he, that was his question, is that room already there, is it finished? And yeah, it is finished, there's a bed in there, they have used it just only for summers.
So we've always been told by, for the definition of a bedroom unless something's changed for Title V, that is a square footage determination, must have a window, which it does. Has probably the square footage, but the other thing they said is what determines a bedroom is it has to have a heating source. Or electric or heating. So that's why I'm asking that because we get, we get explained certain definitions and then on different projects. Parts of the definitions seem to drop off, but they still accept them, so. I just don't know how he's defining that as a bedroom. I just, I don't understand where he's coming up with his definition of a bedroom, has something changed that we're not aware of? And I know that the system was put in in two thousand and ten, but the bylaw came in much after that because of the issues that they were worried about with the water quality and. I'd like to get some more input from the health department, you know, how these things are changing all the time. You know, this project doesn't, you know, on other projects, something doesn't work, so we'll move it to an office, so we'll do this just to fit in the systems and. I just don't see without heat that this would meet the definition.
Thank you, Bob. Scott, anything?
Hi, Tom, hi, Beatrice.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there a five-bedroom system in the ground already?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's five and.
So it wouldn't matter whether there was five bedrooms in that house right now, it's still adequate for five bedrooms, whether it's that apartment. That's existing or five bedrooms in the house, there's a satisfactory five-bedroom on the property, the septic, right?
There is.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify that with you guys.
So I guess the difference comes in is the bylaw itself that was put into the apartments doesn't just go by what the septic system is in the ground. It goes by what the use was of the property in these overlay districts with the ponds. And it's very specific, in fact, Scott McGann, which I was kind of surprised, and that's why I read both in. His original assessment of the property. Was that even though there was a system installed in two thousand and ten for five, it was considered a four-bedroom. And because of the change in the apartment bylaw, it would require the denitrifying system. Then later on, he changed it to say, oh, well now I'm going to accept. The room under a new definition, and if I accept it under a new definition and now say, yes, they're already in existence. Then I don't have to require the change on the apartment bylaw, so it's not that it doesn't have a system that covers it. I know the Title V in two thousand and ten covers it, it just appears that the bylaw change for the apartments. Doesn't go along with that two thousand and ten type of system for the five bedrooms.
Yeah, if you look at the bylaw, it's very, very clear that what it basically says is if you are increasing the bedrooms, the number of bedrooms. You have to do that.
Right, and we're saying.
To a denitrification.
But we're not increasing the bedrooms and that was specifically discussed with him because he was not aware that that room is already there, finished and has a bathroom. And it's been, has been used as a bedroom all along.
Yeah, I wasn't commenting on that, I was just commenting on Scott saying, is it's five-bedroom? Septic, then what's the difference? Well, the difference is the way the bylaws written and the way the bylaws written, it says, if you increase. Your number of bedrooms and you happen to be in that kind of a location, you have to go to the denitrification.
If you see, I mean, you probably don't know when the request for referrals was put out, but. I remember when it came from the department, you know, forwarded to me and I said, wow, that was fast, of Scott to get a referral out so quickly. And so we did call him about it and he said, you know, he's so busy running around with COVID and everything, he really hadn't had time to look at the plans. That were filed with us, I think he looked at the existing house plan and said, well, it's only a four-bedroom or something. And then when we took the time to show him the plans and describe the plans to him, then he agreed that it was a, it was already a five-bedroom. Already five bedrooms existing on there. He did, he did a fairly hastily, you know, wrote out that first referral.
Scott, my apologies, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on that, Tom, is there a fifteen-hundred in the ground there now?
Yes, fifteen-hundred gallon septic tank, yes.
But it's not set up for any kind of denitrifying, it's got no baffles or any of that?
No.
Under those, could it, in the event that that was required? What would, it would be a tank change or would it be building a baffle out of block in that tank? And then accepting some kind of denitrifying? The field doesn't have to be denitrified, just the tank, right?
Well, the field, yeah, the field wouldn't change, you have to put in a new tank, probably put in a whole new tank with some type of system in it. That would do the denitrifying before it got to the field.
Okay. That was where I was going with my question previously. My question was more along the lines of, with the added weight of the dormers? And. Are you guys confident that the load, the weight load that you're adding, the dormers and the, I know it's an open floor plan. How much more weight are we adding to that floor that's in the garage now?
We, I have a structural engineer, we're totally taking care of, we're having a transfer beam above it and over the floor joists, so that's all, yeah.
That's all I needed, all right, thank you.
All stamped, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. And Mr. Bunker, just to, just to make sure I understood what you said earlier about Moreland Road. And the town requesting that you go to the selectmen for a license. So the house was built in nineteen twenty-seven and then it's some, I'm sorry.
Ninety-two-five, ninety-two-five, and this is, you know, I don't know that the walls were there in nineteen twenty-five, just that the house was built in nineteen twenty-five. And Moreland Road was taken in nineteen twenty-six. So, you know, you can take what you want from it, but I mean, I think it's not that big a deal, it just takes a little bit of time or to go to the selectman to permit it. And I think that the engineering department is somewhat overreaching. To go to the select to to permit it and I think I think that the engineering department is somewhat overreaching all of this. People have stone walls and fences in the road lanes, layouts everywhere.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to get the timeline straight. All right, uh, those are my questions. Uh, any follow up from the board? All right, uh, public comment on this project. If there's anyone out there, any question, comment or concern regarding this project two hundred Moreland Road. Uh, go ahead and hit the raise hand and we'll elevate you in a minute. All right, not seeing anyone for public comment. Back to the board. Would the board like to proceed?
Uh, well, I'm certainly ready to close the hearing.
Sure.
Second.
All right, so a motion to close made by Ken and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed, Ben, Karen, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the hearing is closed. There, do you want to have board discussion at all regarding it or you want to have a straight vote?
I guess my my only issue again was that is that one clause, if the if the health department has said they're calling it a bedroom. I'll go along with it, but I want to put in the findings that it's an existing unheated room with a bath. Because I I just. We're getting a lot of these issues on properties with the health department and I just want to make sure. That it's listed, the health department's making the determination that's a bedroom and that's why they don't have to comply with that section of the apartment by law.
I think that's fine, but I I would point out that our I think our usual criteria for. Bedroom has more to do with whether there's privacy. And, you know, when we try to make people get rid of bedrooms, we ask them to put in a four foot case opening that this. Clearly, this room has privacy. It's got a bath. Actually. By the testimony of the applicant's representative, there's already a bed in there, so. You know, I don't think anywhere we've, I mean, we said that it has to be heated. Obviously, it's more comfortable if it heated in the winter, but.
Right, and Bob and Mary, you brought up very good points uh about the accessory apartment by law and. You know, specifically about the D night system. I think if we were in a situation. Where this application was a new, a brand new bedroom being proposed and I understood it. You know, didn't have heat. It's been existing for quite some time. Um, I I think would be a slightly different situation. Uh, requiring that D night system if it was in fact an entirely new bedroom being proposed. But Bob, you're right. I I think that would be an appropriate finding once we get to it.
It just gets us off the hook if there's a problem later on.
Exactly.
I I'm in agreement with that. If it was new construction and it was that and it wasn't a. They had been using it for umpteen years the way it was and and the system's adequate for for volume right now. That's why I I side on the side that I'm siding now. If it was new construction, Terry, I uh. I I would I would tend to agree with you on that, too.
Sure.
So.
And I know it's a very minor point when it comes to this application, but I know that engineering uh has a tendency to bring up. Uh, the the aprons and the uh the fencing or whatever the situation might be along a public way. And when we have had had a history of of agreeing with them and having applicants go before. Uh, the selectmen, but with this case, how does the board feel?
Well, the planning board, they have it in their application. They reviewed it. They've asked them to go for a license, so.
Okay.
Since they've already done that, I I don't see any reason we couldn't ask them the same thing. Just go to the selectman for a license.
All right, so for the sake of uh.
I mean, we've asked it on all the other on on all the other referrals from engineering where something's been in a in a way. We've we've requested that everyone else has gone for a license or with the board of selection.
All right, so we'll just follow suit then. I was willing to cut them a break if anyone else was willing to, but since the the planning board has requested that, I guess. We will too. All right, uh, would anyone like to make a motion then?
So then I. Make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
All right, very good. Motion to approve with conditions by Bob and seconded by Scott. Go on to findings.
Uh, so we'll have to leave some of this up to Noreen, but it meets all of the apartment by law criteria, size, use. Um, we can put a finding that it was stated that the homeowner resides in the main house currently year round. Uh, put in the findings that there is a septic system put in in two thousand ten for five bedrooms. Uh, there is already a um unheated room over the garage uh that the health department has deemed would be a fifth bedroom.
So the testimony has been historically stated, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they they stated it was used uh seasonally as such. Uh, we have to make a finding that the stone wall is in the public right of way. Uh, also, uh, that the it would need a water line from the. A new water line, a what, I think.
I I I think you did say that was part of the referrals, Bob.
Yeah, from the water department, it would need a water, a water line.
Say that the the addresses were changing.
Yeah, well, there's a comment. We'd have to put in the conditions that they would have to change the address. The main house would be two hundred Moreland Road. The accessory apartment would be two hundred A.
Yeah, I thought I heard that.
And that the engineering division will assign that when they come for the sign up on the permit. Uh, also just put a finding that it was outside of conservation jurisdiction.
All right, anything else for findings?
Certainly in keeping with the with the neighborhood, I mean, it's not more more detrimental.
Thank you. The height and setback from the street.
Sure, height of the. Height is, I think, is seventeen feet and the setback, I didn't quite catch that, but.
It it exceeds the fifty feet for an accessible structure.
And a lot, the residential be lot is over thirty one thousand square feet. You can put the exact amount in.
Anything else for findings? About conditions.
So we'd have to list the uh the bylaw conditions regarding um. Owner uh living one of either the main house or the apartment for seven months of the year. Also, the condition that it can't be rented, uh and neither one can be rented out for the period the owner is gone. I have to list the one about the affidavit, the yearly affidavit that needs to be signed and submitted to the building department. Uh, in the conditions, you'd have to put the uh the license with the selectman.
Engineering's address issue?
Of the address for engineering.
Per plans, if we didn't already say that?
Yep, and you can do, so you can do the um for the address, you can do that section ninety nine dash one, the legible numbers. Uh, the applicant will have to install a one in a new one inch water service to the garage apartment.
Suspect sign off?
Uh, yeah, we must always add that on. It's nice to have now anyways, because at least they can get some photos.
Anything else for conditions?
Uh, is this it? Is there dry wells on this at all? I know that was a rinse station out back, wasn't it? I guess not, all right.
I'm not seeing.
We can just addition the addition that um. Any of the um that the the roofing for the garage has to be put into dry wells or. Some other measure to encompass all the roof runoff. Trying to see if engineer.
Well, there is a pretty good grade there out to the, I mean, there's no chance of it running off on anybody else's property. I mean, it. The grade's pretty strong there where it'll run away.
Yeah, the engineers department, they actually didn't put a um.
No, because because of the land, there's so much land there.
Why, yeah.
Grade is, the angle of.
You're not worried about it.
It'll just run away.
Yeah, I'm not worried about dry well.
So, yeah, no, we don't have to worry about that. We can scratch them.
All right, anything else for conditions? Let's call for findings as well. All right. Uh, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed, Ben, Karen, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the motion uh to approve with conditions passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, would anyone?
Chairman, can we take two minutes?
I was just gonna suggest that myself. We will take a five minute break. And we'll be back shortly. Uh, and are there any motions to be made at this point in time?
Thank you.
All right, so motion to take that out of order was made by Bob and I'll give that second to Scott. Roll call vote, Ken?
Inform an eye.
Ed?
Ed, Dan Kieran, I.
Bob?
Uh, Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So that motion passes unanimously. We are taking the request for an insubstantial change, comprehensive permit fifty-eight dash nineteen. Crooked Melo- Crooked Meadow LLC, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-six, and forty, Crooked Meadow Ro- Road in Hatchville, out of order. It is a request, uh, for changes to previously approved plans. Um, um, I know the board knows this by now, but just, uh, for the education of everyone, everyone watching. Uh, this is a request for an insubstantial change. It is a sent- essentially an administrative change, uh, that we would be voting upon, uh, tonight. Uh, as an administrative change, it'll just be done through the ZBA also office. Uh, the board has two options, whether to vote. It is an, it's insubstantial change, which would make it an administrative approval. Uh, if we decide it is a substantial change and the CMR regs help, help us guide us, uh, with that, uh, that would trigger a public hearing. Uh, so as an administrative approval or administrative request, this is not a public hearing and there is no public comment taken. All right, uh, so we do have, uh, list of changes and Noreen was kind enough to send out, uh, summary of that along with, uh, the applicant's actual request.
Just a reminder, the original board members that heard this, uh, Kate, were yourself, um, Ed Van Kuren, Robert Dugan, Mary Berry, and James Morse. And I know James can't be with us tonight, so you may want to appoint someone in his stead, perhaps?
All right, and, and I'm sorry, Noreen, can you give me those names again? It was myself.
Sure. So yourself, uh, Ed Van Kuren, Robert Dugan, Mary Berry, and James Morse were the original voting members for the comprehensive permit.
All right, uh. All right, so James is, uh, unfortunately not here tonight and I'll appoint, uh, Ken as a voting member on this. So it'll be myself, Ed, Bob, Ken, and Mary.
So, Noreen, should we read each one and vote substantial or insubstantial and just go through the whole thing and then pull out? Any that are substantial?
Uh, I think you can probably read through them and then if you, if there's anything particular you want to discuss. You know, it's probably the most efficient way to do it.
Okay, so there's, uh, so on the request for insubstantial change, there are eighteen changes that are being requested. Number one, they're requesting the buildings to be two feet deeper. The existing footprint per duplex is thirty-two feet by sixty-four. And they're requesting a change from thirty-four to sixty-four. Sure, so on, so on item number one with the, uh, two feet deeper, um, the administrator thinks that that's okay. For number two, which is for buildings three and four. Uh, they want to move the bulkheads to the side of the building. Uh, administrator's comment was the side bulkheads between buildings three and four are too close. They're only two feet from each other. Uh, so they recommend staggering the siding. Uh, B, reduce the patio ten feet by ten feet to eight feet by ten feet. Uh, no comment on that one. C, increase the setback from the real lot line from eighteen feet to twenty-two feet four inches. Um, that seems okay. It's an increase on setback. D, increase the height of the perimeter fence along the westerly lot line from six feet to eight feet. Uh, comment that typically an eight-foot fence is unnecessary for the setting, however, um, they don't have any comment related to the request and they are, uh, making the fence larger. Uh, E, provide deciduous trees of a minimum ten-foot height on the westerly, a butter's side of the fence. Uh, and that is an okay comment. Number three, amend lot coverage by structure from sixteen point nine percent to seventeen point seven percent. Uh, comment is okay. Four, amend the lot coverage by structures, parking, and paving from thirty-seven point seven percent to thirty-eight point five percent. Comment is okay. Five, the removal of four deciduous trees from the activity area as they may eventually conflict with the leaching field. Uh, the Board of Health confirmed that the removal of these four trees only with the lawn in this area is optical, opti- optimal for the septic system. Um, administrator's comment that this will not affect any perimeter screening, so that seems fine. Six, on page eight, line four, correct location from twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-six, and forty-eight, Crooked Meadow, to twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-six, and forty. That is, was an agreed change. Seven, on page eight, line seven, request the change from first-time buyer to any qualified buyer. Uh, administrator comments that the language actually says to the extent possible and therefore does not limit to first-time buyer, otherwise no comment. Number eight, on page nine, condition three, the third line change, the homeowners association to condominium association. And that was agreed with the administrator. Nine, on page nine, conditions four and five, request clarification that the engineering bond is for the street opening driveway permit. Request clarification on the engineering inspection. Uh, comment was yes, the bond is for street and driveway and is refundable when satisfactory completed. The peer engineering firm will conduct the inspection in lieu of town engineering. And that will necess- necessitate a fifty-three G account and a contract. On page ten, last paragraph of condition five, state's DPW engineering will be the inspecting agent. Administrator said that should be corrected to be peer inspectional engineer. Eleven, on page twelve, condition sixteen requires a certified plot plan prior to application for the permit. Uh, the administrator commented that they already have the plan, so no action is required. On page twelve, this is request twelve, on page twelve, condition nineteen requires vertical curbing, which they would like to change to a Cape Cod berm. Uh, comment here that the engineering specifically recommended vertical curbing to protect activity area and sidewalks from vehicles. Uh, it would recommend not changing this condition, um, cause this request could be labeled as a substantial change and to not approve at this time. Thirteen, on page thirteen, condition twenty, requires installation of the fence prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant requests the fence be installed after the foundation is in and backfilled. Uh, administrator didn't have a comment, but said the, it would be a preference to install the fence prior to minimize the impact on the butters. Um, any grade changes would have to be properly lined up with the budding grades. Page thirteen, change reference to condominium association. Administrator said that was okay. On page thirteen, this is item fifteen, the last paragraph of condition twenty and twenty-one. These conditions for landscape review are duplic- duplicative. Uh, the administrator said, uh, she could eliminate the last line of condition twenty as duplicative. Sixteen, uh, condition twenty-six of thirty-six, change reference to condominium association. Administrator said that's okay. Seventeen, uh, page fifteen, condition thirty-seven, regarding a three-month reserve condominium fees paid in advance by the, not paid in advance by the affordable owner. Uh, town council has opined that this requirement should be eliminated as costs will be overseen by others and to remove the condition. Page, uh, number eighteen, page sixteen, which is condition forty-five. Third line sentence regarding an appeal should be removed or changed. Um, ministry said first, the issue is mute, mute, and then second, the wording is correct, so. Those are all of them. Should we? Go to each one and go with substantial and substantial?
Sure. Uh, and Bob, thank you for that. And Noreen, thank you for, uh, thank you for that summary. Um, so Noreen, you would, you, you would suggest going one by one and voting whether.
Well, I'm wondering if, if anyone. We should go one by one unless everyone agrees with the recommendations of the, of the, uh, administrator. Which I happen to agree with, so, uh, in which case we could save ourselves some time and just say. We agree to those.
Uh, that, it's a very minor point, but with regard to number two. Uh, D, uh, the size of the perimeter fence from six to eight. Um, sounds like that's agreed upon, so I'm fine with it, but I think anything, or any fence over six feet requires some sort of permit from the building commissioner. Uh, so just so we're clear on that, um, does anyone have any issue with, with anything else in particular before we vote?
Yeah, just, just the one I do is, uh, is, you know, I know coun- council is weighing in, but I want to know what the rationale is on number seventeen. I want to know what cost would be overseen by others.
So the information that I was given was that, um, the parties that review the cost to the affordable owners will confirm that what's being requested in advance or as part of a total payment, et cetera, still complies with the affordability requirements.
So what, so what harm would it be leaving that in?
Well, so the developer has speci- specifically requested that it be removed because they felt that it would be unfair to the other homeowners as well as to the amount of money that they're collecting for the development to not have the, um, contributions by the affordable homeowners as well.
So in this case, Noreen wasn't, doesn't, in that case, what did, and I'm not going through the whole decision. But I thought the situation was the, the developer would need to finance those until the affordable units were decided or would pay for the difference. And that's, and that, so that's my question. It's, it's not the homeowners. It's actually the developer. Because these are, these are fees that are due in advance. So if we left it in, the developer would have to put the monies in and if the, um, if the state said, we're doing less monies or will allow the owner to pay for them. That, that's something that could just be done. I, I don't see why that has to be changed.
Right, so the tent here is for what's being requested is that the developer not have to pay those amounts in advance for the affordable homeowners. But similarly, uh, any amounts that are requested from affordable homeowners will have to pass an approval because they can't ask for more money from an affordable homeowner than they can reasonably afford. So.
So if, if, so let's say the, if the monies aren't put in the account advance based on what the costs are for the developer. You'll have a problem with the association. So if the, if the state says the develop, let's say it's a hundred dollars and the state says they can only pay seventy-five. The developer would have to make up the difference of twenty-five or he's got a, he's got a deficiency for the association.
Or, you know, I suppose the other option is that they can have the affordable homeowners pay a rate that is consistent with the reduced fee that they're purchasing at. So I would imagine that that would be something that the developer will work out with, in conjunction with the state.
So current, so currently item thirty-seven, this is how it reads. It says, "The affordable unit homeowners will not be required to provide an advanced payment of three months of condominium fees and shall only pay one month's fee at a time. The developer must fund the first three months of condominium fees for the affordable units and may subsequently be reimbursed."
Right, so the language that we put in was language that the board had determined was what you thought would be best and subsequently we had input from town council advising that we really can't require that.
So are they saying we can't or they're asking not because they think it's overseen by somebody else, the cost?
Uh, I got the impression that it was both.
All right, so I guess if we're just reviewing this, just so everyone knows, so that's, I, I do have an issue with that one. I think that one should remain. All right, so I guess if we're just reviewing this, just so everyone knows, so that's, I, I do have an issue with that one, I think that one should remain. And the one that was substantial that the administrator said regarding the curbing, I agree with that, most of the other ones are pretty, I think the other ones are insubstantial. I just, I just know that when they're doing these condominiums and these associations, they base it on the monies that are put there in advance, so if a overseeing person says less money should go into those units, you're going to start this association on, at a deficiency, which is a problem, and that's why I would say keep the language as is on the, on the, and not go with the request for item number seventeen.
And I agree-
They'll take care of itself after three months.
Yeah. All right, any other comment before we decide to vote? Ken or Mary?
Oops, so just, we need a clear statement of the motion, so the motion would be that something like we, we adopt the recommendations of the administrator with the exception of condition or item seventeen, we, we wish to retain condition thirty-seven as is.
Isn't there one that she said she, she thought was-
Yes, there was, but that's, if, if we go with her recommendation, then they, that is, we're not okaying that change. That was the change to the curbing in the activity area.
Yeah, I think you need to make sure that's in the motion. Right, but I, if, if you want to retain the vertical curbing and not allow the requested change to the Cape Cod berm, that you would need to specifically state that you're not to include that as part of your insubstantial change.
So then the motion might be, we deem all of these requests insubstantial with the exception of, you know, change, change to-
Ken, at least on my end of things, your audio dipped out there, sorry.
Oh, we, we deem all the changes insubstantial except that we, except for changes to condition nineteen, which requires vertical curbing and condition thirty-seven, which requires the developer to yes, pay, pay the, pay the fees for the first three months for the affordable unit, that-
Sounds like a good motion to me. All right, so motion was made by Ken, seconded by Bob, roll call vote, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So that motion passes as previously stated. All right, very good. So moving back to application sixty-one dash twenty, Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road in T-Ticket. Tom, do we know if we've resolved our technological issues?
They do not have a webcam, but if they want to try and say something, they did call in by phone.
All right, so.
So I would say, I would suggest we continue this because the applicant is not prepared to make a presentation allowing video. And we need a video presentation as part of the process, so everyone understands what's going on.
I agree.
And I think, and we should probably note that the administrator gave them this information well in advance to work out any issues they had with IT for a proper connection for a presentation.
I'll make the motion to continue this. Because-
Second.
Data.
But, but before we make that motion, we'll actually need to, need an actual date.
Okay, so as you know, you've got a bunch of other forty Bs that are on your list as well, so the two dates we were currently looking at were either February eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
Does the applicant have a preference? Hard to know.
Looks like they just dropped out.
That is hand raised.
He's getting, not getting elevated? Mr. McKenzie or Mr. Montero, are you with us?
Hand raised, but the phone.
Can you get him on the phone?
Looks like he's, he's toggling between being muted and having audio. All right, he's saying in the chat, he'd like an early date for our hearing.
So that would be February eleventh.
All right, so, and that is the earliest, I know January's all booked up. Noreen, you said it was either the eleventh or the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
All right.
Ready for motion?
Ready for a motion, Scott.
I'll make a motion to continue this application to February eleventh.
Second.
And can we add to that, it was due to the technological issues from the applicant?
Yeah, which, which did not enable us to get complete information, I think that's-
Very good, so we'll add that on to the motion. So that was made by Scott, was there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Bob, roll call vote.
You asked for me?
Yep, Ken.
Ken Forman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott?
Scott Solinsky, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so unfortunately, that hearing is continued to February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. And I can see in the chat that Mr. Montero and Mr. McKenzie are expressing their apologies for the tech issues. No worries, maybe reach out to phone with IT beforehand and straighten it all out, but we will see you February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. All right. So that does it for our public hearings list. We have voting the minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to accept the minutes from November nineteenth, made by Ed, seconded by Scott, roll call vote, Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
God?
Scott Solinsky, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye, so those minutes are passed unanimously. Request for insubstantial change, we already took care of that. Board discussion, I just wanted to bring up the point, without getting into the details of the actual application earlier tonight, that was withdrawn. But it's a common theme that we've been seeing specifically with third bay garages for some reason. How there's a process, I guess, with inspectional services that they just tell an applicant or a builder to come to the board after the fact, and that raises obvious issues. Know that the board has expressed frustration the past three or four times this has happened and we've been lucky in the, we've been lucky with the facts that it hasn't been affecting lock coverage or side yard setbacks or anything of that nature. So I was hoping, Noreen, as the administrator, could you reach out to the building commissioner and please ask him if, if that's been his practice, if he, we would prefer it obviously, if we could get those projects before a building permit is issued on the project.
Sure, so I did speak with the building commissioner, particularly in light of the fact that the board members and neighbors noticed that the door was framed or about to be put in for the third bay. And the commissioner pulled up the plans that he approved and he said that he had specifically approved only two-car garage doors for the garage access. And that while there was a note on the plan about a future third door, it was not part of the approval. So it sounds as though the developer perhaps proceeded prior to an approval from the board. So there is some issue and, and probably would be worth a conversation with the building commissioner and he has offered to do so to discuss general garage space and how he's viewing these, but generally, it seems as though it's been more efficient for developers to get a permit to start building whatever their structure is, and then if they require relief to come in and file for that at a later time. And I have advocated to people that, you know, if you are looking at that third bay, you know, when you make the design, come in and file then, so that, you know, you can efficiently proceed with your work.
Thank you, Noreen.
Seems like a simple thing, get the permit first.
All right, because I, I know the board gets frustrated by, by, by it and it obviously erodes confidence in the public. I don't know, anyone else? All right, anything else for board discussion? All right, seeing none. Any board updates?
So there was to be a new water superintendent because our water superintendent had retired. And the new person apparently opted not to accept the start here. So then we were without a water superintendent again. Mercifully, the retired superintendent has been able to help out part-time, but it has left some gaps, I think.
Oh. It's unfortunate, so I guess.
So if anybody-
Hiring, hiring committee goes back to square one, I guess.
If anybody knows a good water superintendent.
I don't know any.
Not me. Not me.
Why not?
No, no.
Oh, boy.
And you're an engineer, I'm close enough as it is.
They have their hands full over at the water department, then.
Yeah.
They do.
Anything else for board updates?
Oh, and I am, I am having a, I'm having a conversation next week with the building department and engineering because one of the issues we've been having here is that we've been having requests for sign-offs from the building department without sign-offs from engineering and water department. And recently, there was a property that required a new water service and the board had conditioned a dry well, which was not put on the plan. So I'm hoping that this conversation we're having next week will help facilitate a better circuit so that these items are not overseen by the developers.
Very good. All right, anything else for board updates? Are there any future agenda items?
Many meetings.
Noreen, I, I know you, you and I chatted earlier about potentially moving up the start time on our next hearing, which is January seventh.
Right, and apparently that is dependent upon whether we are going to potentially need to add a case depending on what IRE works out. So I had asked in advance, but I guess where we're all chatting, we would potentially look at starting a half hour early on the seventh, but again, that would be dependent on the information I get as to whether you'll need to or not.
All right, because it's a pretty loaded night as it is, but if that one thing-
It is.
Needs to be added on. Okay, I can certainly rush, rush home to be on Zoom by six, is everyone else available, just?
Yeah, I probably could do it.
Yeah. So with the holidays and everything, I, I don't want it to kind of fall by the wayside and then we're
Very true.
Stuck scrambling on the seventh. All right, so if everyone's available or if you need to check, go ahead and let Noreen know.
Did have one question related to the executive session we went to. Is there any more information regarding that?
Certainly check on any information that you'd be interested in or in need of and be glad to communicate that to you via email.
Okay.
Fantastic, all right, anything else? All right. Hope everyone has happy holidays, Merry Christmas, all the good stuff.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, too.
Yeah, cheers.
Covid-free New Year.
Right.
Yeah, I think the end is in sight.